City Council meeting. We will go ahead and get started. And Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Mangum.
Nichols.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Lad.
Okay. Thank you. And if you'll now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after that, please remain standing. We will have Pastor Whitaker with the invocation if he is here.
I don't think he's here, so we'll have a moment of silence.
If not, we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this Pastor Whitaker? Are you Pastor Whitaker?
I am.
Oh, come on. Perfect timing.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for your mercies. Thank you for your traveling mercies that even though we were delayed this afternoon, that I'm here safe. And Lord, we thank you for Pocatello, for the beauty that you've given us in your creation and for the way that you have ordained government. I pray that you would be the focus. You would be honored and glorified in everything that is done in the manner in which our city conducts its business as good stewards of the citizens' finances, as well as being a city that upholds the morals that your word so clearly lays out. I pray for each and every city leader that is here today, that you would guide and direct their hearts. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: work session meeting of June 12, 2025, and clarification and regular city council meetings of May 15, 2025. B, Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of July 1 through 15, 2025. C, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for May 2025 showing cash and investments as of May 31, 2025. D, Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Benjamin Gomez to continue serving as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Benjamin's term will begin August 5, 2025 and expire August 5, 2029. E, Pocatello Arts Council Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Lazarus Clark to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, filling a long-term vacancy. Lazarus's term will begin July 18, 2025 and expire July 18, 2028. F, City Council Decision. Short Platte Approval for Juniper Heights Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the short platte for Juniper Heights subdivision, which subdivides approximately 6.24 acres of land, generally located between 2001 and 2211 South Second Avenue, into four lots subject to conditions. Item G, City Council Decision. Short Platte Approval for Frederickville Village Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the short platte for Frederickville Village Subdivision, which subdivides approximately 0.36 acres of land, generally located at the northwest corner of South Second Avenue and Frederickville Road, into three lots subject to conditions. H, City Council Decision, sorry, Short Platte Approval for Alameda Commercial Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the short platte for Alameda Commercial Subdivision, which subdivides approximately 6.78 acres of land, generally located at 900 Yellowstone Avenue, into four lots subject to conditions. And Item I, City Council Decision. Final Platte Approval for Stratton Estates Subdivision Four. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving the final platte for Stratton Estates Subdivision Four, which subdivides approximately 1.12 acres of land into 12 lots subject to conditions. Councilmember Cheatham.
Madam President, I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through I as listed in Agenda Item Three.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Connie would, no, sorry. Have it. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Bates.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Sorry. Are you voting?
At the end. She typically votes at the end.
Nichols.
Yes.
And then I would say Lurick.
Yes. Okay. So, motion passes. Okay. Before we move on, I'm just going to get my glasses. I'm struggling.
You want a tree?
Struggling to see numbers. Oh, you've got the big type. There we go. That's better. Agenda Item Number Four is Proclamations. We have none tonight. So we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. We have council meetings: August 7, 4:00 p.m., Special City Council Meeting; 5:30 p.m., Council Clarification Meeting; 6:00 p.m., Regular City Council Meeting; August 14, 9:00 a.m., City Council Work Session. And other events: Southeast Idaho Senior Games continues through July 19; July 25, 12:15, Optimus Skate Park Ribbon Cutting; July 28 and 29, Montana Shakespeare in the Park, 6:00 p.m. at ISU Quad. This event is free to the public and sponsored in part by Pocatello Arts Council. Municipal Band Concerts continue on Sunday evenings at the Ross Park Band Shell from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. through August 3. The concerts are free to the community. Open Burn Ban in Wildland Urban Interface Areas continues. And we will move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Oh, boy. Is it sticking to this one? Okay. Got to get my sheet ready. Northgate Ridge Map Amendment Request. This time has been set aside for the council to accept comments from the public regarding a request by Smart Town LLC and Millennial Development Partners LLC, represented by Chris Adams of Creek Hollow and Associates, Inc., mailing address Wilson Avenue, Suite 1A, Pocatello, Idaho 83201, to amend the future land use map redesignating 82.96 acres more or less of property generally located east of Olympus Drive and Northgate Parkway from Commercial C to Mixed Use M U, excuse me, and to rezone the subject property from Commercial General CG to Residential Commercial Professional RCP. Following a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. I declare this public hearing open. Councilmembers, do we have any ex parte communications? Nope. We will hear from the applicant. If the applicant could come forward and give their presentation.
Can you hear me well? My name is Buck Swainy. On your agenda, it indicates that we would be represented today by Chris Adams. In light of the planning commission process, I decided to not be represented and to come up and talk to you on my own and face to face. And so this is actually a fairly straightforward process that we're looking at right now. In the future land use plan for this site, which contains 82 acres more or less, much of it already is in mixed use as a future land use. The small, most western part of it is currently in the future land use as commercial, so we're seeking to update it so the whole parcel is in mixed use, which was the intent for the project from the beginning. As a RCP zoning designation, it would give us the ability to do, of course, all sorts of different product, including single-family, low-density, medium-density, high-density, and commercial. The project that we're preparing right now would contain all of these components. So this is paving the way for us to be able to bring in a preliminary platte, laying out those details, and moving forward with a significant and real project on the parcel.
Do you want to do questions now?
Council President.
One second. So we...
Or you can wait until after the staff does their presentation.
I was going to say, do you want to ask a question of Mr. Swainy? Or do you want to hear the staff presentation first?
I can wait.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and ask staff to come forward and give their presentation, and then we'll ask questions.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Becky Bab. I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Pocatello. The application in front of you has been presented by Smart Town LLC and Millennial Development for a map amendment to both the future land use map and the current zoning map. It would rezone the future land use map in part from Commercial to Mixed Use and the subject property from Commercial General to Residential Commercial Professional. I'd like to review a few items from our staff report, just because I'd like to emphasize that the council's decision needs to be based on these criteria that are the pieces of the code that are relevant to map amendments, and so that's where we'd like to focus your discussion if possible. So the findings of fact and staff report has demonstrated that it would recognize substantial changes to the actual conditions of the area. This is in response to forecasted land use. As the applicant stated, they have intentions to develop this land in accordance with these two map amendments, and so that would be responsive to those actual conditions of the area. The zoning in question would be in the community's best interest in allowing additional uses, as stated this area, which is just east of the roundabout, and I have the maps if you have not, a printed copy of your packet in front of you. So just east of the roundabout at Northgate Parkway. And I would like to just let you know what the difference is between those two zonings. So going to Residential Commercial Professional is intended to accommodate a mix of residential professional offices and neighborhood commercial uses, including business professional services, convenience retail, personal services, and restaurants in close proximity to residential areas and major transportation facilities. Residential uses are permitted consistent with the density and requirements of the residential high-density zoning district. Heliports, medical centers, and some utilities would be conditionally permitted. So those would be the commercial uses that would require a conditional use permit. Heliports, medical centers. Commercial developments of that size would be conditionally permitted. So the main difference there would be in the residential density, which Commercial General does permit residential development. It must have a storefront or be three stories tall, as you are aware, and meet some of those criteria. So the main difference in those two is the mix of residential uses that is permitted outright. The commercial uses, the only conditional use permits that are required in our code would be for developments of that size, a medical center, a heliport. Those are the conditional, would be permitted but would have to go through that additional process if the zoning were permitted to be changed. So the list of uses permitted by the zoning ordinance would blend with surrounding uses. Just to the west of this development, it is already residential, commercial, professional, so that would blend. The site is physically suitable for the type and intensity. The property is currently undeveloped, and as I previously stated, it is adjacent to residential, commercial, professional zoning currently. The uses permitted would be adequately served by public facilities and services. I have checked with our engineering and fire departments, and they have stated that the utilities are readily available and this could be serviced. Fire has noted that it is in a certain fire area, and so those conditions would be addressed at a plating stage, but the utilities are available. The uses permitted are compatible in terms of scale, mass, coverage, density, et cetera. So as I stated, the only difference would be that increased in residential uses that would be permitted and is compatible in terms of scale with adjacent land uses, so it would meet those criteria. And then the last criteria for that is compatibility with the future land use map, which, as I've stated, would also be modified slightly to match this. So those are the criteria. They are within your staff report packet. Planning and zoning after a public hearing did vote to approve this to move forward to the city council, and so I will take your questions, which I know there are some.
Okay. One minute here. Becky and Madam Clerk, has there been any written correspondence submitted for the record?
There has. There has been an email, which I believe has been received by all of the council members, and so therefore is counted as public testimony.
Okay. And that's to be included?
Yes.
For our consideration? Okay. And we had a question first from Councilmember Paulson. Is it for Becky or for Mr. Swainy?
Could be both.
Okay.
Yeah. So does this inhibit commercial development in the area?
So those conditional, there would be very specific criteria that would be conditionally permitted, but it would allow for a blend of those commercial uses that I listed. Those would be the primary focus, as opposed to certain other commercial uses, but they...
So it really just allows more housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Becky first?
So are there other properties in that Northgate area that are zone Commercial General?
Yes. This application is only for that piece of the property that is owned by, yes.
I understand. Just I'm trying to look at the big picture.
Yes.
If this has changed from Commercial General, are there other Commercial General properties in that area?
And we could pull up the full map, and it is adjacent to a property that has not been annexed, just to the south, and so that would not have a zoning designation. Further south of that is your Jerome Street, those residential developments, and then it's RCP on the other side. So it would still allow those commercial uses, but it would not be zoned only Commercial General.
Surprising.
Yes. I was surprised.
And just to help clarify, there is a significant area just west of Olympus that is zoned Commercial General in that Northgate area. Just, I think that was...
Yeah, that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a probably related question myself. Based on the written correspondence, the one piece that we did receive, there were comments in there about that area, and I'm paraphrasing, I can't remember exactly how it was stated, but something to the effect that, you know, we were, the intention was to keep that as Commercial General, to allow for more commercial development and to preserve commercial development. My understanding, and I think Mr. Swainy touched on this too, is that the intent of that area in general, when we were developing the TIF district plan and all of that, was more of a mixed use, you know, like RCP type of zoning that allows some commercial but not strictly commercial. Is that, do I remember that correctly, or...
Well, I wasn't here when that Northgate plan went forward, so I'm going to let Brent take that question.
And Brent wasn't here either, but he probably knows.
Brent McLean, Planning Director. Yes, so originally that area was zoned, designated and zoned as RCP, and it was rezoned at one point into Commercial. And that was actually going back to what it was originally designated and zoned as. And so it's, and it's hard, because when you look at when that area was first brought into the city, and there's a lot of things that have happened in our economy since that point. We've gone through COVID. There's a lot of housing needs and issues that are really exploding, and you guys are all aware of those things. And so the thing that we have to do is be a little nimble and a little flexible as we're looking at these things. And what we see in our economy and what we see for the need for development in the city, this section actually would be better served going back to what it was originally planned to be, is that mixed use.
And that was another, I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but I think it fits with what you're saying, is when we were planning the TIF district and developing that plan, I also remember discussion about the need for flexibility, that what exactly would develop first and where and how wasn't, you know, that was a concept that wasn't set yet, and it wasn't specific, and therefore the zoning might need to change.
Yeah.
And I remember that discussion too. So I think you used the word nimble. I was thinking flexible, but that you could allow, because as a development proposal comes forward, you know, then that's the thing that's ready to go, and so we need to relook at the zoning and does it fit?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Bates.
Thank you. Brent and Becky, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So all the Satterfield area, that whole neighborhood adjacent, it's zoned RCP?
No, that area is zoned residential.
And so this isn't adjacent, I guess.
No, this, well, it's adjacent to the north, but the area that we're talking about that has RCP is in the Northgate area. There's large portions of the Northgate development that is already zoned and designated to be that mixed use.
So, and if I may, when we're talking about the high-density, how dense, I guess? How dense can we go?
The RCP, which is a very common zone district in the city, can go up to 30 units per acre. So that would be an apartment-style type development. A lot of the RCP in the city has actually developed quite less than that, and you're looking at more like townhouse-type development or even single-family-type development in a lot of those RCP zones. And so you can go from a single family all the way to a large apartment complex.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Cheatham.
I have one.
Nope.
Is there, will this allow us to do something that can't be done without this designation? There are vast areas of Northgate that are undeveloped, growing weeds two to four feet haul high, as I drove by it yesterday, and I'm wondering why we're doing this when what we have hasn't been working?
So the difference, again, is between the Commercial and the RCP is the residential uses, the single-family without commercial storefront, the townhomes. So it's allowing a mix of residential uses. In the Commercial General District, the residential is still permitted with a ground-floor commercial storefront, or if they're the three stories high. This allows for a much wider mix of residential uses within that development to mix with the commercial uses, and the major change in the commercial uses is just what's conditionally permitted or not permitted.
But this designation, if I may, this designation already exists in some of the existing land in Northgate, correct?
Yes.
The RCP?
Yeah.
Just to chime in, don't go into it, Becky. So when you look at the Northgate area, it is the RCP areas that are developed. Everything that, the Commercial General areas have not yet developed. And in my conversations with some of the property owners in that area and other commercial developers, they don't want to develop until there's more house tops in the area. And so, you know, if you want the chicken or the egg, well, in this case, what comes first is the housing. And when we have the housing, then those commercial areas will develop. But what you see developed in Northgate is all RCP, every single thing.
I guess my irritation, like I think Mr. Luke's is the weeds. I wish the property owners would do something about cleaning up that development so it looks better than what it does. It looks abandoned. Many of those pieces of property do.
Okay. And that's fair.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilmembers? Nope. Okay. So we will move on to testimony. Is there any testimony by those supporting the application? You can remind them they have three minutes. And you have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yes. Please state your name.
Give me a high sign when I get to 10.
You've got this.
I won't take long. My name is Arlo Luke. I've been a resident of Pocatello for 60-some years, and I've, many of you know that I've been involved in interest in the community in the past. About six or seven years ago, I met Tom Ballard, former partner of Buck Swainy, and he presented a vision to us of a major development in Northgate that would bring jobs to this community. And not only jobs, just, there were more than jobs. There were high-paying jobs. There were technology jobs. We felt like we could attract companies in Lehigh Valley and Silicon Slopes, that they would save millions of dollars by the labor and the property here. And we spent a lot of time, we had a large committees, committees of local people, and but the vision was, first, jobs; second, housing, which was necessary if we could have jobs; and the third was commercial or retail. There was a great vision, a lot of plans written, and then COVID set in, and we lost Tom. And Buck is the remaining active partner, and that vision still remains. But my whole interest and support is that we have, we need to have housing to attract jobs. And so that vision, although it was hurt by COVID and other situations, that's my desire for Pocatello to improve the economy and bring jobs, high-paying jobs to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other testimony supporting the application?
For me?
Testimony supporting the application?
Absolutely.
And you have three minutes if you can just tell your name?
My name is Gene Hudg. First, I want to compliment all of you, many of you I know, and I just want to thank you for your efforts of making this a better place to live, our country a better place to live. And I said I want individually to say thank you for what you've done. I am, I've lived in this community for 80 years. I'm a retired dentist. I'm also an adjunct professor at Idaho State University. And one of the things that happened three years ago, like Arlo had mentioned, I became aware of what this Northgate concept was all about. Nowhere in our existence have we ever had a planned community like this is, of 5,000 acres, that someone wants to come and change our community. And the reason I say that is because I was a retired dentist, and I compliment this community for allowing me to practice here and have the finest clients I could have had. But what happens is we... But what happens is if you go to Idaho State University as a student and you graduate with an engineering degree, you're probably going to move to Texas. Why? Because there's not an opportunity for you to have here. And so what's happened with this is the standpoint with 7,000 jobs, and that's the whole thought. What do we have 7,000 jobs? Because we're going to have a high-tech industry, we're going to have clean industry. We don't want the $15 jobs. We want the people that are going to do robotics and stuff like that. And so this whole thought, and I give Buck Swainy, the guy here tonight, a concept. It wasn't my vision, it wasn't Arlo's vision, but they said, could we not do this for Pocatello? Who would have thought that? Because they're not from Pocatello. But they said, maybe we have something that's going to be really good for this community. And they fell in love with our community. Now, many of us live here because we fell in love with this community, but how are we able to give back? And I think with this whole thought process of this is where the residential areas are going to go, three different ones. This is where the commercial area is going to go, where we're going to dictate high-tech industry that's going to come and want to come. And I had the privilege of working a little bit with Idaho State University on their Bengal solution concept and said, who would come here? And they said, there's so many people that want to come here because of the affordability of the land, because of the workforce that we have. And I said, could we not promote this? And so, you know, as, but the thing that's got me more than anything is the master planned community. Nobody else am I aware of, and our state has this kind of stuff. Salt Lake tried to do this, and as soon as they established it, and the whole concept of the planned community is if you work at this one of these plants, you can walk to work. You don't have to drive. And so what happened in Silicon Valley is they started the process, these companies came, the number one silicon producer in the United States is Provo. The second is Northern Utah, the third is California. They want to come here. And I think, wow, what an opportunity that we have with the times that we have with some of the other stuff. And so I just want you as a city council to really, if you haven't seen this brochure, please look at it. But I just want you to know how well-planned out this is. This is a well-planned community. This is where the shops are going to go. This is where the golf course is going to go.
We're out of time. Thank you.
You're out of time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more testimony supporting the application? Okay, we will move to testimony by those uncommitted to the application. I mean, testimony uncommitted, no. Testimony by those opposed to the application. Nope? Okay. Everything's in support. We have a chance to have a rebuttal by the applicant. Would you like to say anything?
Nothing by way of rebuttal, but I would be happy to answer a couple of those questions that seem like maybe they were floating a little bit, if you're interested in a moment more of my editorializing.
I'd like to hear it.
Yes, the, one of the great challenges we've had is over the last couple of years, we've worked with Bannock Development, we've had a lot of conversations. And one of the key things that they are always up against is the process of getting significant companies to look at a place requires a housing stock that's either predictable, that's online, or that's coming online. That is not available right now in Pocatello. And so this, for us, is a way to address what's clearly a market need and what clearly also leads the opportunity to bring jobs and bring employment. And so this is very strategic. By way of, Councilmember Bates, you asked a question about density and intensity. And I think, I'm guessing by the little snippet I heard, that the one letter that was sent in was the same letter that was read during planning commission. In that event, there's a couple of things to address there. And one is that a lot of times when people approach the idea of traffic or of intensity, they approach it from an emotional perspective rather than from a technical perspective. I'm an AICP certified planner. I approach everything from a technical perspective. When we look at something like this, we ask a question from a manual developed by the institute or the ITE. It's basically technical engineering for parking and trip generation. And when we look at, let's say, a single 5,000-square-foot C-store with a drive-thru for People's Morning Diet Coke, one single 5,000-foot, using the statistics from ITE, one single 5,000-foot convenience store generates the equivalent traffic of 3,033 townhomes at peak hour. People don't understand how not intense medium-density development is in terms of peak hour traffic generation. In fact, it's approximately 20 single-family homes generates the same peak hour traffic as 100 townhomes. And so it's a very low-impact use. More importantly, any conversation about sales tax is tricky because you all know the way sales tax works in Idaho. It's collected, it's taken, the state takes their big fat cut, there's a little bit that's left over for the communities, and then it's allocated by population. And guess which community has the population? So a little pittance of what's collected here makes it back to you in sales tax. Your primary revenue comes from property tax. And if I start to unfold the statistics for what you can put on 20 acres of different land uses, even after the $125,000 credit that residents get, townhomes or apartments generate so much more tax for the community than any commercial development possibly can. It's not even close. It's a five-times or a 10-times factor. And so this is beneficial for the community, this is beneficial for the TIF, this is beneficial for paying everybody back. So I wanted to give those facts and add them to the record.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Swainy? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will close. I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Counsel President slash Acting Mayor? I don't know what to call you right now.
Councilmember Paulson.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Six as outlined.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Paulson and a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Shawnee, will you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Welcome back, Buck.
So Agenda Item Number Seven, Trade and Purchase of Firearms and Accessories, Police Department. Counsel may wish to consider the police department's recommendation and accept a quote from Javelin Arms, a law enforcement dealer, for the following firearms to be used by members of the Pocatello Police Department. A, trade-in nine old PWS SBR patrol rifles, one old Bushmaster patrol rifle, two old Remington 700 precision rifles, 41 old Rebel suppressors, and one old Aimpoint heavy machine gun optic. And B, purchase 10 Springfield St. Victor SBRs, 10 Silencerco? Silencerco? Silencerco. Saker suppressors? Is that right? And 12 Aimpoint Pro Patrol rifle optics. Staff can purchase the new equipment at a significantly discounted rate due to trade-in of old firearms and equipment. Funds are available in the police department's fiscal year 2025 budget.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Cheatham?
I would move to approve Agenda Item Number Seven, the Trade and Purchase of Firearms and Accessories, Items A and B as listed.
Second. Second.
Was that Dakota?
Madam Chair, before we vote?
Yes.
May I ask a question of Mr. Collins, Officer Collins?
Thank you.
Phil Collins, Pocatello Police Department.
Mr. Collins, the rifles that are trading and being purchased, are they all 223556 caliber?
They are. So both actions, the Remingtons are not, they're 308.
308s? Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolution Adopting the South Fifth Urban Renewal Area URA Eligibility Study. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution and accept the Pocatello Development Authority, PDA, South Fifth Urban Renewal Area URA eligibility study and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Councilmember Nichols?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Paulson. Shawnee, would you please call the roll?
Madam Chair.
Oh, before we vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Cheatham?
I'd like to ask some of the same questions I asked in study session, if I may, for those at home. Have you been able to determine the area of operation versus area of impact?
So I, Brent McLean, Planning and Development Services Director. I was trying to find where it talked about the area of operations in the document. I wasn't able to find it. I saw a study area and I saw the area of impact. Where I saw it referencing the area of impact, it was talking about the city area of impact.
Right.
The study area is the area of the proposed urban renewal area, but I didn't see the operational area that you had mentioned, so.
I'll get with you after the meeting.
We can talk about it if you can help me find it.
I also, you know, asked you a question earlier. The Sagebrush Step Land Trust has some land south of town they call Century Heights, I believe. And it's, it butts up against the ridge on the west, on the east side of the area. Is any of that going to be included in this proposed urban renewal district?
None of that area is in this proposed urban renewal area.
Okay. And I also asked earlier, how much land is not in the city? How much is county land that'll be included in this?
I don't have the exact number on that acreage at this point, but I can get that number for you. We'd have to do a little analysis on the map to get the exact number of acres.
One of the exclusions that was made in the proposed plan is affected ag land. And I'm not aware of anybody using land out there for agricultural uses. There was something said about the last three years.
Yeah, so it's based on whether the assessor has their land designated as ag land. And so we have to work with the county assessor to determine which properties are designated as ag land. Some of those properties, I believe they receive funding for not using it from.
GRP.
Yes. And so they're designated as ag land but actually not being used as ag land. And they're receiving some credits for not using it as ag land, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Brent? Okay. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, Professional Services Agreement, Kirk-Huffaker Preservation Strategies. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a professional services agreement between the City of Pocatello and Kirk-Huffaker Preservation Strategies for Section 106 Review and Compliance Regulations for Property Located at 429 Washington Avenue and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The agreement in the amount of $6,467.50 would be funded through the Grant Division Professional Services Budget. I saw his hand first, but did you have a, did you want to ask a question?
I wanted to talk about this before we make a motion.
Okay. So Councilmember Cheatham and then?
Councilmember Paulson want to discuss or make a motion?
Discuss.
Okay, let him go ahead.
Okay, you two.
For Christine, sorry to make you say it twice, but just for people watching, if they are, could you talk about the difference of that this is a grant and we don't have to pay money back for this?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the question, Councilor Paulson. So this particular item before you is to do our due diligence as part of the Housing Trust Fund Program application. So those funds are administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Through a formula, they allocate these funds to every state in, every state in the country. And Idaho typically gets between $2 and $3 million per year through this formula allocation. The state of Idaho has administered these funds through Idaho Housing and Finance Authority. They've elected them to be the grant administrator. And through that program, they can then authorize the funds to sub-grantees. And eligible sub-grantees include community development block grant entitlement communities, which Pocatello is a CDPG entitlement community. So IHFA conducted outreach to the entitlement communities to see if we'd be interested in this grant, the Housing Trust Fund Program as a sub-grantee. And so we're in the process of putting together the feasibility and application for that project, which still has multiple steps. This is one step in that process to conduct a state historic preservation office review, Section 106 review, as part of the HUD requirements under the environmental conditions. And so this would allow us to determine if there's any mitigation needed as a part of the project to help you all make a decision on whether we want to approve that Housing Trust Fund application at a future council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Councilmember Cheatham, sorry.
The, so this money is discretionary at the federal level. Is there any, is there more than a one-time obligation of the city? Or is this something that needs to be renewed every year for the next 30 years?
Could you please clarify, this money as in the money from the Housing Trust Fund?
No, the overall, the Housing Trust Fund, yes.
Housing Trust Fund?
Yes.
So the way the program works is they would provide the city with the funds we would be looking at as a $1,050,000. And so they provide the city with that $1,050,000. We would use that to construct the affordable housing. And then we would have to be in compliance with the rules and requirements of that program in order to ensure we're eligible and meeting compliance and don't have to pay the funds back, just as we do with all of our other grant programs.
So just for clarification, it's a one-time grant?
Yes.
But we're responsible to maintain for 30 years?
Correct. A term and condition of this program is to ensure that the housing that you construct is affordable for a 30-year period. And so affordable meaning it's, meets the HUD rents and everything for 30% area median income residents. And so the only residents who would be able to rent that housing would have to meet that income eligibility. And that would last for 30 years on these particular properties.
Is there, if I may follow up, madam? Is there any contingency that the city could become responsible for repayment of that $1,050,000?
Any contingents, any?
It could something happen.
What if it burned down?
I mean, what if it were no longer rented by?
I would assume it would be an insured property. So if it burned down, you would then have your liability insurance cover that and things like that. But we'd have to develop those terms and conditions, you know, review that with legal. But yeah, if for some reason the city was not in compliance with the term and condition of the program, then, you know, it could be deemed out of compliance and we would have to pay the funds back. This is the same for all of our grant programs. So similar with the CDPG program that we mentioned, if we got audited or monitored and was determined we did something that was considered ineligible activity, you would then be liable to pay that funding back, which is the case for, again, pretty, most of our grant programs and projects. And so in those conditions that we would have in the agreement with IHFA, it would spell out everything that we had to comply with in order to ensure that we didn't have to pay the funds back.
I just need to make a statement.
If I could ask one question before you make your statement, following up on what you've been asking already. And we talked earlier about, you know, that we would work with some other entity to manage these properties if we moved forward with them so that the city would not be doing that. Would they, in that process, make sure that we're in compliance? Or would we have to sort of oversee that part for them? Or, you know, how would that work?
Sure. In terms of compliance, we would treat it just as we do with our CDPG program. So we have a compliance analyst through CDPG. And so in terms of ensuring that the, you know, whoever is managing the property, so if we did engage with the housing authority, for example, making sure that when they are, you know, renting the property out, those those folks that are eligible for renting it, you know, meet certain criteria. If we had a property manager who was solely doing something like mowing lawns and fixing faucets, then we would have to come up with an alternative process internally to ensure compliance with sort of the rental side of things, to make sure that those folks are 30% AMI and they meet all the other HUD requirements. But ideally, we'll move forward with the housing authority in an agreement with them because, as mentioned in the previous meeting, they can apply a project-based voucher to it and they also do this type of work already. They already qualify folks to move into housing that has restrictions based on the HUD area median income, whether 80%, 50%, or 30%. So that would be the most seamless path forward. And as I mentioned also in that meeting, they've been very supportive of this. They have several vouchers that are not filled. They don't have properties they can apply the vouchers to. So this would at least add some units to help address that issue.
Are there other questions? Counsel Member Bates?
If I recall right from our study session, if we build these and then we, at some point, decide we want to sell the properties, whoever bought them would have to abide by that 30-year restriction? The guidelines, correct?
They would, or we would have to return those funds to IHFA for the project cost. So if you didn't want to have the, if you wanted to be out of compliance, then you would have to return the funds.
Right. The city would have to return those funds. But I mean, if we sell them, it's not like those funds transfer to the property owner.
I'm sorry?
It's not like those funds would transfer to the property owner. So if they, if a new property owner of these lots decides, I don't want to make them affordable. I want to raise rent or, you know, I'm not in compliance. The new property owners would be on the hook for the $1 million or so? Or how would that work?
Right. So you, the city is responsible for ensuring the compliance with the grant. So let's say you're 15 years in and you decide you don't want to use the property anymore. If you sold it and didn't require that new owner to have that requirement on there, comply with it, the city would have to return the $1,050,000 to IHFA. So you could potentially sell them for more and make a profit, or it could sell for less. But the idea of this project is to ensure that there's affordable housing for that lowest, extremely low income range for a long enough period to provide for that need.
Thanks.
I forgot that I did have one question myself, which actually I think would be more for Brent because it's related to the comp plan rather than the grant. If I could ask that. Brent? One of the, this is related to some of the comments I'm hearing. I don't recall if this was talked about in any written correspondence, but I have heard from some people sort of questioning the idea of infill, like looking at infill as a bad thing. And I thought that in our comp plan and in our, you know, sort of planning process, that we were prioritizing infill. And I'd like you to speak a little bit about that.
Sure. Brett McLean, Planning Development Services Director. So infill is something in a comprehensive plan that is very supported, something that we talk about as a tool to help increase our housing stock, to help develop new housing for the residents of Pocatello. It can become, part of the struggles with infill is you're dealing with properties that are developed lots of times and maybe not fully developed. But there's costs that are associated with those infill projects that other developments may not have to deal with. Like we were talking about North Gate. And you have this open field that is really easy to develop. And so part of the infill standards of our city code allows for a lot size reduction to create what I like to call soft density in some of these areas. And if you look at a lot of the areas that have the potential to have the infill standards, they already have some of this same type of housing, same type of density, that it would essentially take these lots that might be a little bit bigger and allow for, instead of a single unit, you can put two units or three units on it. And the impact of that is actually very, very small if you can do it in that manner, rather than dumping an apartment complex. And so there are some lot size reductions with infill standards, but that is something that is very supported in our comprehensive plan. A great example of this is the Bonneville Commons development. And I think most of you are familiar with that. That development, if it were to develop to just the standard, zoning standard, you probably would lose at least a third of those units. And so, but the impact of increasing it by that third of units, you don't really feel it in that type of development. So that's why I like to call it a soft density. And you see a lot of these things in the university neighborhood or the Bonneville neighborhood, or even in the Alameda neighborhood, where you have some smaller lots with units on them and.
We had that one on 10th Street, I think.
Yeah, there's some on 10th Street that were recently built. Then, in fact, I lived in one for a little while. And they're, I mean, it's a great opportunity to have new housing stock in some of our older neighborhoods and in a way that fits with the neighborhood too. And that's the key. And that's why I get excited about this project is because it does provide the city an opportunity to control what actually develops there and to make sure that it fits with the neighborhood as much as possible.
And with our overall plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I will come back to Counsel Member Cheatham for your statement. Thank you.
You know, I agree that we have a need for low and moderate income housing. I'm just not sure that the city should be in the business of building that kind of stuff. And it ought to be back to the retail market. I can't support the city getting into a 30-year program. Now, if we're not going to do that, there's no reason to spend $6,000 on this study. I think we want to dispose of this property and encourage development over there. Let's dispose of it like we have other pieces of surplus city property and let the marketplace find the right kind of development for this. I have to vote against this.
Other comments? Anybody have anything else to say? Okay. I didn't make a note of who made the motion.
We don't have a motion.
We didn't have a motion on the table for this one?
Okay. We're open to a motion.
Okay. So I am open to a motion. Well, that's why I couldn't remember. Counsel Member Paulson?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number Nine as outlined, authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review in the amount of $6,467.50.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Counsel Member Paulson and a second by Counsel Member Nichols. Connie, Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Call the roll, Connie.
Yes.
Bates?
No.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda Item Number Ten. Airport Power Service Requests and Quote Acceptances, Idaho Power. Counsel may wish to approve service requests and accept quotes in the amount of $70,988 from Idaho Power for necessary power line removal and installation for the new taxi lane at the airport and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The project will be funded by federal and state grants and Airport Passenger Facility Charge, PFC, funds.
Madam President.
Counsel Member Cheatham.
Madam President, I move for approval of the Airport Power Service Request and Quote Acceptance from Idaho Power, authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Ten.
Second.
So we have a motion by Counsel Member Cheatham and a second by Counsel Member Paulson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes. Okay. Agenda Item Number Eleven. The council has the following options for reading ordinances. If the council makes no motion, the ordinance will be read on three different days, two readings of which may be by title only and one reading of which shall be in full and placed on final passage for publication.
Counsel President, can I just have Tom talk about the 25 miles per hour thing?
Okay. We'll do that first.
Oh, sorry, I don't.
Would you like to have a motion for how they want it read?
Let's continue with the how we have it read.
Okay, sorry.
And then before we vote on it?
Yeah.
Is that?
You want to do what? I guess the question before the council is, you want to do this under? If you approve it, is this one reading under the rules of suspension or three separate readings? That's the first motion.
But I need to read all this. I don't.
No. Okay.
Counsel, how do you wish this?
Okay. So how do you wish this to be read? And I saw Counsel Member Bates have his hand up first, sorry.
I move that the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Eleven, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second motion.
And, okay. So we have a motion by Counsel Member Bates and a second by Counsel Member Paulson. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bates?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes. Okay. I'm just going to read the ordinance or the description. An Ordinance Amending Pocatello Municipal Code, Chapter 10.16, Speed Regulations to Provide Clarity, Create Continuity, and Improve the Function of the Title as a result of School District 25 Board of Trustees' Decision to Close Washington Elementary School. So, Tom, if you could come and answer some questions? Oh. Did we vote on the procedure?
Yes, you did.
We did?
Yeah, you voted under suspension.
Somehow I didn't remember. Okay. And who had the question for Tom? Counsel Member Paulson.
Would you mind just reiterating? Because some people in that area are really concerned that their streets might be switched to 30.
Yes. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. So what this, what this is, this ordinance is doing is amending the school zones around the Washington Elementary, or the previous Washington Elementary School. This will remove the school zones from the areas surrounding it and it will move the speed limit back to what the rest of the street is. And so all of the streets that are adjacent to Washington are 25 miles an hour. So they will be, they will be maintained at 25 miles an hour. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay. So Rich, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Madam President. An Ordinance of the City of Pocatello Municipal Corporation of Idaho amending Chapter 10.16, Quote, "Speed Regulations," End Quote, of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, more particularly by amending Chapter 10.16.030, Areas 20 Miles Per Hour/School Zones in Chapter 10.16.040, Areas 30 Miles Per Hour, to provide clarity, create continuity, and improve the functions of the title. And provided that this ordinance and the provisions contained here here in establish pursuant to this order shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Oh, Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes. Item, Agenda Item Number 12 is items from the audience. And we don't have anybody signed up. So we will move to Agenda Item Number 13, which is adjourned.